And we'll call councilmember, is there being here? Councilmember Masters?
Yes.
Councilmember Cramlett?
Here.
Okay, so the next agenda item is interview applicants for city council and who did you guys say was gonna go first? Randy Holmstrom will be first and if the other applicants wish they can remain in the room or if they would like to go into the library, you can open the door and go into the library. Well, each one is interviewing, we can do that or you can stay.
We're staying.
Okay. Okay, Randy, you're...
So Randy, just to talk a little bit about the process, on Monday night we established a set of five questions as well as a list of issues we'd like to hear you talk about and your answers to those questions. Did you receive those questions and issues?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just be following that script, I'll read a question, then Eva will read a question, we'll just rotate till we get to the end. Okay. So in your application for the vacancy on city council, you said that your vision for Cascade Locks in the next decade is to be a town that's a community of choice where people choose to live, that we need to work on the very issues that drive citizens away, for example, access to healthcare, senior and workforce housing, transportation, education, jobs and others, that we need to be a community where citizens feel engaged and empowered. Cascade Locks should be a community of opportunity with a positive vision for the future. Now the question is, what is the city's role in achieving that vision?
Well, I think, you know, the city's role is all of those items that the city needs to work on, housing issues, employment, economic development. That's what the city does, enables those items to proceed, monitors them, tries to get them going. We have a small town that should take advantage of every opportunity it can when it comes up to work towards those items. I did want to talk about consensus building and it relates really to the answers of a lot of questions. I can think back about 15 years ago, if it's okay to go off the script here for your questions, but 15 years ago Kalpeck had a lapel made that said, you know, "Two communities, one vision," and it was in regards to the casino and really it was more communities than just two, but it even became more fractured when the overpass got fully revealed that it would possibly involve closing that. We're really a community of 15 or 20 visions and we don't have a consensus and I think that's the root of a lot of the problems that we have right now. And it's called a town hall meeting down here and we maybe want to have town hall meetings, but I think that's just one piece of the pie. I'm not sure what the other pieces are, experts would need to be brought in to help us focus on what this community, community's vision is. And hopefully you can get people to participate, I know when we've tried it before, you don't get everybody, you get a few opinions. We're a town that's really good at saying what we don't want, we're not a town that really says what we want.
Okay, and second question, what is the role of the city council in running the city and what is the role of staff in running the city?
Well, I think staff needs to run the city, council needs to set policies, overall direction, budget, monitoring, but it's really staff that runs the city. I would not want to be involved if the thought was to micromanage the city or its staff.
Okay Randy, also in your application, you said that the most critical issues facing the committee, the community, uh, at the city are, as you've already alluded to, a community that has many visions, no consensus, we need to work on community visioning and the citizenry to find a way to participate, to believe in the process and have an influence on the outcome. What steps should the city take to resolve those or that issue?
I think that's the critical issue, to engage the community as best that the council can. I do believe that there needs to be professional help given to us through the University of Oregon or one of the other colleges to help us figure that out. They must have some community development people. It's a common problem, I know Landry remembers when I was on council before, it's like you could take our minutes, strike out Cascade Locks, put in another name and there's thousands of communities that are going through the same issues, but we need, we need some help. I do believe that the current situation involves solving our fire EMS situation, I think that was a strong public sentiment in the last vote. I think that needs to be immediately solved and then work on, work on everything else through the public engagement process. I don't think we have time to wait for an ambulance service to be reestablished or, or fire service.
How should the city council handle conflicts, both internally and externally?
I think we need to work through any conflicts honestly, be willing to compromise and find a way to support the result. I think through a public involvement process, you know, excuse me, I had a head cold for about a week, but through a public involvement process, I think there'd be more consensus on what direction council should be going, there should be less contention, I think that's been the problem. Where people just have their own opinions and they're all strong minded about it. I think we could do a lot just by working through it step by step, not cutting people off and listening, listening to the public, listening to the council. And that would apply to both internal and external conflicts.
Okay Randy, and this is another one I think you've alluded to, the question is what needs to happen in city government here in Cascade Locks in the next 12 months?
Well, I mentioned the fire EMS situation and a lot of other things is the public engagement process. There's a lot of relationships that need to be repaired in the community, I mean there's neighbors that don't look at neighbors anymore when you drive. I mean, there's neighbors that don't look at neighbors anymore when you drive by them, and it's pretty bad out there. Repair those relationships. And there's also countywide, statewide, there's bridges that have been burnt in the last few months. Those need to be repaired to move forward.
Okay, that's the end of our formal questions. If there's something else, we'll move on.
Okay, so we don't have a chance for questions or do you want that as part of the process? Since I'm the first one, I'm engaged, but.
Well, the process that we decided on was to ask you these first five questions. Are you asking?
Well, if you were given the opportunity for the candidates to ask questions.
That's not part of the process that we decided on. Since you are the first candidate, you know, I guess we could talk about, talk about that as an option, we'd have to offer it to everyone. Is that something you wanna do, Eva?
I think that certainly in the EVA interview, often times that people get an opportunity to ask some things.
I'm not advocating one way or the other. You guys should, I guess, should know so it's fair to everybody.
Yes, yes. More kind of important to me is that we had kind of come up with the issues one through six at the end that were supplemental. And so I wanted to see what your guys' idea was and the fact of, you know, is there anything else that you wanna add? Because we're quite, there were six points that we were looking for information on. Tom, how do you feel about that? Would that be an acceptable question to ask everybody?
I'm not sure. I'm sure I'll make it sound like, let me one more time what you're asking.
Well, we have two things. We've reached the end of our questions and since Randy's our first person, I'm not sure that we've touched on all six points, our supplemental points that we wanted to touch on. So I wanted to be able to ask everybody if there's anything that they wanted to elaborate on or add to, you know, and be considered.
So we're asking another question that they want to elaborate on or what's a question they want to ask?
Well, and that's the second part is that Randy asked if we were going to take questions.
Um, and I don't, I don't know how that goes. I don't have a problem with that. I know we were trying to make the thing where there was a lot of consistency with it for, you know, through all of the applicants. So I don't try, I don't know, I don't know what we do in doing that to help create that consistency.
I think we have to ask the same questions, question after questions of each person.
Here's a suggestion and I'll just put it to the two of you, Eva and Tom. First of all, my thought is that we should not take questions from the applicants. Then we have to figure out, well, who's gonna answer it? It's a different question each time. Maybe we, all three of us have different, three different answers. There's just too many inconsistencies there. But to wrap up the interview by asking, are there any other issues on our supplemental questions that you would like to talk about as an open-ended question? So that if they didn't get a chance to talk about during the earlier questions, they could follow up with that. Are you okay with that, Tom?
Yeah, because they got, they got a list of our questions down in something else, correct?
That's right. Yesterday.
So if they stick with the questions we sent or our supplements, yeah, I'll find that.
Eva?
Yes.
Okay, Randy, back to you. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about?
Well, knowing that, I would pick up on your number five question about challenging your experts and I would assume that's staff to be sure you get a Cascade Lock solution. I think that's been a bone of contention over the years that you have consultants or staff that are getting out there away from the vision of the community. And that's kind of a double-edged sword. The Nestle Waters thing, which I really hope is successful, was brought to us by Bernard, who was kinda out there to go after a water bottle plant. And oh my gosh, who would've told him no? I mean, he brought it to council, but is that a Cascade Lock fit? If we didn't give them the leash, we wouldn't be having that opportunity now. I guess that's my parting comment is just be careful. And I know the intent is to leash them in a little bit sometimes, but if we have good visioning of what the community wants, it would have to fit that. But I think the first step would be the visioning thing rather than just a real high collar on staff or consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next interview will be with Gail Lewis. Okay, just to review the process again, on our Monday meeting, we established five interview questions that we're going to ask. And just now, we added a sixth question, which is more of an open-ended question referring to a list of six issues that we'd like you to address tonight. So at the end, if you don't feel you've addressed them all, you'll have the opportunity to do that. And so that'll be the process. Did you get a copy of those questions and the supplemental issues?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start now. Yeah, Tom?
Are we interviewing now?
This is Gail Lewis.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Were you able to hear Randy and Lewis talking, Tom?
I heard Randy, I didn't hear anything of Randy. I think I just heard enough that they'll pick up what's going on. I don't know if I'm hearing Gail or.
Let's see if we can move the phone, if that helps.
I haven't said anything yet either. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
I'm gonna try and move in the phone and then I'll ask a fake question and see if that helps.
Okay.
Gail, could you just tell us a little bit about your background?
No.
Did you hear that, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll lie under it.
I mean, I can't.
Gail, in your application for the vacancy on city council, you said your vision for Cascade Locks in the next decade is for Cascade Locks to be a community with a strong infrastructure, reasonable utility rates and excellent city services. That Cascade Locks can be a community responsible, respected and a great place to live. What is the city's role in achieving that vision?
Well, I think the city, you know, obviously is responsible for and needs to focus on our infrastructure as far as the city streets, reliable power, reasonable rates and try to make it a livable and a community that will induce people to be interested in living here. Whether they work here or not, you know, we ought to make it a livable environment. Now, there's some big obstacles to that, of course. Probably one of the biggest is the school. But short of that, for those people that don't have a children's school or something like that, there still should be a good environment to live in. And I think the city needs to look at the finances and fire EMS, the usual protective services, police, perhaps ordinance enforcement.
And what's the role of the city council in running the city and what is the role of staff in running the city?
Well, the usual customary is, you know, I agree with many of the others that the city should establish the policies on which the staff execute their duties and responsibilities on a day-to-day, month-to-month basis. But I think the council, in addition to that, needs to hold, well, one, to be accountable and hold the staff accountable for being effective in their jobs and being financially responsible and encouraging the staff to make recommendations for change where appropriate. I see it as a partnership between the staff and the city as well as the citizens. I think the council has to listen to all ideas, both good and bad. And I, I don't know if this is somewhere else in your question, but I think the idea of town hall meetings are good, but I think they should be supplemented with community surveys. And I just go back to, you know, years ago when we did pretty extensive surveys, maybe fifty, sixty questions. Because in a town hall meeting, you may get one or two hundred people, but not everybody is comfortable with getting up and speaking. But it doesn't mean they don't have an opinion. And some very interesting things come from that. I still remember in one of those surveys, one of the questions was how many people watched the city council meeting on TV, which I thought would be pretty low. But if I remember the survey, it was like, of those that responded to the survey, it was like fifty percent, not of the town, but of the few hundred that responded to the survey. So I'm a real proponent of surveys to try and get a big picture.
Okay. Also, in your application, you said the most critical issues are EMS fire support, utility rate management, objective financial and budget management, accountability of city council and staff as well as citizen involvement. What steps should the city take to resolve those issues?
Well, I think the same thing a number of others said. I think we need to get our fire department whole and complete, including ambulance support as aggressively as we can. As far as rate management, I don't think we've raised rates for a period of time. And I think we need to develop plans to have periodic rate increases. Because one known factor is the cost continue to go up. And if we don't increase rates, then we're just gonna deplete our capital reserve. And I know that's not a popular thing, but I'd still rather see a one percent increase per year for five years than a five percent increase after five years. And people would know what to expect, as one example. Financial management, I have a sample, I won't go into the detail now. But I think, I think the council is ultimately responsible for the fiscal solvency of the city and the separate funds. And the control points that exist with that are the signing authorities at the department level, including the city administrator. But I don't think the tools are in place that allow the city council to effectively monitor that. I mean, for example, you have a resolution that says that money should not be spent unless the funds are available. But as I understand it, and I could be wrong, but the fire department is in the hole right now and yet money's being spent. And what your policy says is those monies would require a city council approval. And I don't believe that's happening and I don't know who's accountable for following the policies that are established. But the bottom line is I think there should be some variance reports that, after talking with Mary Ann, are feasible to where quarterly you'd get an exception report that showed the variance between revenue and expense on a quarterly basis in print instead of waiting for a problem to develop and then trying to back up and recover from it. And that's enough on that.
How should the city council handle conflict, both internally and externally?
Internally, you mean within the city, within the staff or the council or? I'm not sure I understand the internal versus external.
I think internally, you know, amongst the council.
Well, you could always punch each other out, but I don't know. I mean, there's certain professionalism that's assumed to exist at the council, among the council. And if there's conflict, I think those should be tried to resolve out of the meetings and offline somewhat and try to get the agree to disagree standpoint. At least to where you respect each other's opinion, whether you agree with it or not. And I would apply the same philosophy to external, if you mean public. Same thing.
Okay, Gail, what needs to happen in Cascade Locks city government in the next twelve months?
Certainly revisit the city budget and re-scrutinize some of the changes that were made last year and try and see what could be done to salvage additional funds for fire EMS and any other departments. At the same time, if you believe what others say, that many fire departments are not self-supportive and need additional funding, then I think there should be an initiative looked at to have a ballot measure ready for not this November, but next November to have some additional funds created through a vote to supplement fire EMS. So budget is the biggest issue, I see, you know, as well as the town hall meetings, community surveys and getting viable assessment of the community preferences.
Okay, so those are our five formal questions, but you've also had a chance to look at the supplementary list. Is there anything on that list of supplemental issues that you would like to talk about now that we, do you have a chance to go?
On the first one, are we going to court? Is that what, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the first one, yeah.
Yeah. One thing that I, I don't believe exists that should exist and I think it's kind of common knowledge, but not a and I think it's kind of common knowledge, but not articulated. I think the city needs to try and define what concessions they're willing to make to induce a business to relocate here. And what I mean by that is, you know, maybe selling power at cost for a period of time. Uh, uh, if there's water dependencies, you know, what can we do to, uh, uh, defer normal rates as inducements? I, I'm not sure what all could be done, but whatever we have as utilities that we could, uh, defer and document that as a, as a bargaining point with the port, then that would help them perhaps to, uh, step out front with some potential businesses. That's, uh, that's on that. On finance, I think I've talked a lot about finance and... Uh, town hall meetings, I, I mentioned that, as well as survey, survey, survey. How do we get people to meetings? You know, I was talking with a few people and, uh, you know, one of the problems with getting a lot of people in here is the space. But one of the suggestions was to move the library to the school and knock that wall out. And I don't know if that's ever been estimated for cost. But it sounds like, uh, conceptually, it could be a doable thing and allow a lot more space for participants in a meeting, just during ci- city council. Well, one other thing, if I can just rant, uh, I, 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 and I think the Lock, the Locks Center was terminated. And I think that was an important method of communicating, uh, city activities, both plans and completions and progress and issues to, to the universe as far as the community goes. And I, I hope there be a way to reinstate that. Budget, I talked about budget. How do you, how do you think we should challenge experts to be sure we get, got a Cascade Lock solution? I kinda chime in what Randy said, you know, phrase I would use, you know, the world doesn't stop at mile post forty-four. We're not the only place to have many of the problems we have. And a lot of other communities have had the same problems and are in progress to solve them or have solved them in the past. And I don't know how much we can tap into League of Oregon Cities or networking or, uh, and if they're experts, then they're experts, but, uh, too often I just hear of ideas coming from within the, within our community and not somebody's, what other cities have done. And I, I, I just think that's an important resource to try and tap for experts as far as accomplishments go. I think that's pretty much all.
Okay. Thanks, Lockett. Okay, our next interview and the, the last interview tonight will be with Brad Lorraine. So Brad, just to review the process, uh, on Monday night, we established a, a list of five formal questions, uh, that we will be asking you specifically. And then, um, tonight, we just added a sixth question, which refers you to our list of supplemental issues that we'd like you to address tonight. Um, so if you don't get a chance to address those in your answers to the, the first five questions, there'll be an opportunity at the end to do that. Um, you did get a copy of the questions and the supplemental issues?
I did, yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, first question, in, in your application, you said that your vision for Cascade Locks in the next decade is a community with excellent public services and a strong infrastructure that will attract businesses and residents who appreciate what we have to offer and a year-round vibrant tourist trade. What is the city's role in achieving that vision?
Well, um, the city's role is to provide services and infrastructure and it creates a livable environment that encourages investment and growth. And, uh, these services need to be self-sustaining so that it'll ensure stability for our community. And this, part of the city's role in that is, is to work on getting consensus with the community and to be a facilitator and, uh, address the concerns of the community as we move forward to ensure that it is also a community that is in keeping with the, with the community's, the community's vision. And as far as the economic development, uh, end of things for, um, year-round tourism, there's a lot of things that, uh, the city can do in that regard as well. Part of it is po- being able to partner with the port. And, uh, I think that the, uh, city could establish a community re- revitalization committee. Um, I believe that, uh, they've just set up an economic development task force. It's supposed to be a joint city and port thing might be a good step. Um, they could also work with, uh, Rural Development Initiatives, which is a nonprofit that provides, uh, training through the Ford Family Foundation and helps to give communities the resources in order to, uh, gain consensus and, uh, um, get a community vision that, um, works on making, um, getting economic development. One of the other, um, programs is a program called, uh, Main Street USA Program, which is another nonprofit and is an economic development consol- consultant that works largely in historic communities. And also to develop a, and establish an urban renewal district. An urban renewal district is, um, works with, uh, tax increment, um, fi- financing, which is a good time to do right now because it works best when the economy is down and property values are down. That way, as the property values increase, you take that, you take that increase and you can actually leverage that to use it for infrastructure building projects like streets to get private dollars to invest into the community. And there's a lot of other, I mean, I could, I could bore you all night with the different things about the different nonprofits. It's finding one specifically that will work for, um, for our community because they're all slightly different. And there's some of them that, um, you need a certain amount of critical mass as far as population base, tax base, et cetera, in order to make them work. So it's kind of trying to find one, as Tom said, that is a cascade lock solution. So it's, but there's a lot of different nonprofits out there available. I learned about most of this through League of Oregon Cities, which I've been to the last three conferences, which I missed the one last week. But, um, at any rate, it's a great way, um, as far as our partnership with the port, it's good to have strategic partnerships, uh, with, uh, the port, with the county, with Maquette, which is Mid-Columbia Economic Development. Also part of this economic piece is you can also develop a, uh, micro enterprise fund through this, uh, um, urban development district. And what that allows you to do is be able to, um, give new businesses small loans that might be harder to get through another means, uh, through a conventional bank loan. Also, there's matching grants that can be done for facade improvements. Another part that the city has in that is to, um, is with planning, to try to remove some of the, uh, disincentives out of the way. Uh, one of the things that we did, uh, last year was we identified the fact that, um, if somebody wants to do an improvement in our downtown zone, it was kind of an arduous process because you had to go through a plan review at the city council, or I, I mean, at the, uh, planning commission. And the sheer amount of time and the money that it took just to be able to fix up your building was a little bit... Um, some of the, in fact, some of the, um, different businesses said that it was a disincentive because it was about a thousand dollars and they had to schedule it, so sometimes the month, a month and a half out. Uh, what we did was we, um, realized that this is something that could be done administratively. It was extra, extra unnecessary red tape that cost money and took time. So by changing that, it kind of eliminated some of the hurdles, streamlined the process. So that's another role that the city has as far as, uh, being able to encourage, um, economic development.
And, uh, Brad, what is the role of the city council in running the city? What is the role of staff in running the city?
Uh, city council's role in running the city is to make broad policy decisions that provide direction and goals, um, of the city that help sustain and provide for the protection and contribute, um, contribute to the well-being and or in the long-term best interest of the community. And staff's part of that is, uh, to help facilitate, uh, the achievement of the goals and the direction of the council and work together in their respective areas in the day-to-day operations and the responsible and efficient maintenance of the city's infrastructure and services.
Okay, Brad, uh, also in your application, you said that, uh, the most critical issues, um, facing, uh, the community are, um, the fire EMS department, loss of mutual aid agreements to protect our city, the city budget, lack of businesses and local employment opportunities. What steps should the city take to resolve those issues?
Well, I think at this point, uh, as far as the fire EMS department's concerned, we need to maybe look at, uh, an independent outside eval- valuation to be done, to look at the, our current state of our fire EMS and give recommendations on our, uh, possible options, as well as the pros and cons, timeline and expense of each of the potential solutions. It's not that I don't think we can resolve this ourselves, but I'm acknowledging the fact that this is a highly personal and, um, a situation that's difficult, um, I think, to be objective. And I think it might be helpful to have some outside objective views on, um, what our possible options are as we move forward. And, you know, that all relates to, uh, being able, that's the first step, in being able to get our mutual aid agreements back. Uh, I already ca- pretty much touched on the thing with the jobs. I think we also need to work, uh, we need to work with Nestle. Um, we need to work on resolving the, uh, um, the, the, uh, point of diversion application and, uh, with, uh, Water Resources Division and, um, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to kind of get to the next step on, uh, being able to move forward with Nestle.
Um, how should the city council handle conflict, both, um, internally and externally?
Well, I think the city council rules, uh, already contain some guidelines on, on conduct, conduct between council members. Unfortunately, conflict sometimes, um, is unavoidable. Um, we deal with a lot of issues that are, once again, kind of highly volatile. People have strong opinions about them. And, uh, um, I think that's, just kind of comes with the territory. Um, but I think that we need to, uh, work on treating each other with the most respect possible and try to see each other's views and try to work towards a equitable and positive solution. And, uh, like my mom always said, um, the one who's, uh, the one who's right should be the one who, first person to apologize. Um, and I think as far as external, um, it's pretty much the same, uh, pretty much the same outcome. I, I would think another thing that you could do is kind of try to stick to the issue at ho- hand and, uh, try not to make it personal and, uh, sometimes the best way to, uh, end a conversation that isn't going anywhere is to say, uh, you may have a point.
Okay. Uh, Brad, what needs to happen in Cascade Lock City Government in the next twelve months?
Um, well, first of all, we need to appoint a full council and a mayor. Um, just, you know...
Working on it.
Resolve the issue with our fire and EMS coverage, uh, re-establish mutual aid contracts, hire a fire chief slash paramedic, uh, resolve issues with and close the regional communications grant. Prepare, uh, and approve a supplemental budget, uh, which includes allocation of funds and, uh, resolve some of the, um, some of the problems with the funding of our, uh, and the, uh, projected revenues for our fire department. We need to advertise and list or possibly find a tenant to lease the old fire hall building. Uh, work with Nestle, W R D, um, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife on the water rights exchange and the point of diversion application and the potential bottled water plant. Um, apply for an urban renewal district, uh, and work with the port on economic development task force, set up community right revitalization committee and possibly work with rural development initiatives. Look at renewable energy project and potential scope and feasibility. Review the C A T V, um, uh, utility and, uh, look at a, uh, new sound and camera system for the council chambers, just to highlight a few.
Okay, Brad, you, you've had a chance to review our, our supplemental issues and you've answered our, our five formal questions. Are there any issues you feel that you haven't had, had the opportunity to cover and would like to cover now?
Let me see, um, well, there was one that, uh, talking about, uh, how do we communicate, how do we get consensus and how do we, uh, how do we communicate with the citizens? Uh, one of the thoughts I had was, uh, we need to have more, uh, informal gatherings. And it'd have, probably have to be some sort of a public meeting because there would be, uh, a quorum of the council. Because I think that, um, I think the people in the community, first of all, about ninety percent of them, um, you never see them. They're disinvolved, um, a little bit apathetic and, um, uninformed. Uh, we need to more, have more venues where, um, that are less formal, where they can get to know the staff, they can get to know the council, um, as people who all care deeply about the city, where they can, uh, converse with each other and with the staff and with the, um, members of the city, on the issues of the community, maybe in a less threatening environment, um, something, I, I don't know, we could do karaoke, something where it was, it's about, it's about having fun and getting to know each other as neighbors and realize that we all put our pants on one leg at a time, we all care about the city and, um, we all have a lot in common and at some point, there's gonna be common ground. You know, at a, at this point, we seem to be a little bit fractured and we're all fighting with each other from opposite sides of the fence. And I think that, uh, having more things where people can get to know each other and find that common ground and realize that we're all, at the end of the day, even though we see things differently, are headed towards a common goal and try to find that, um, part that I was talking about earlier. You may have a point. You might, you might have a way of seeing things that I can relate to. And I think tomorrow we can do that. I think there's, uh, you know, more of a chance for this community to actually be able to move forward now that we're done with, uh, um, fighting over... to actually be able to move forward now that we're done with, uh, um, fighting over McCoy Meadows, fighting over the casino, fighting over all of the, the fire department, fighting over all of the issues. If we can actually get consensus on a forward direction and find that common ground, I think then there's a, a good chance for the community. That's it, Brad?
Yes, thanks, Brad. So that's it for the interviews, uh, this evening. Uh, we're gonna do another set of interviews for, with the rest of the applicants, uh, this coming Monday, October twenty-fifth, at seven o'clock.
I think it's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. It's Monday.
Monday.
Monday, the twenty-fourth, seven o'clock. Um, and that meeting is also very, very hosted and, and open and accessible. Back to you, Kathy.
Okay, and, uh, how do we turn?